Welcome to the special preservation historic, Princeton Historic Preservation Commission Meeting. Held electronically via Zoom on May 23, 2022 at 4:00 PM pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place and agenda of this meeting has been noticed by transmitting a copy to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton who has posted it to the municipal website, www.pristinnj.gov/meetings, pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Historic Preservation Commission will be held electronically via Zoom. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website, and is maintained throughout the year. Do you want to take the role, Elizabeth?
Yes, Ms. Capizoli.
I'm here.
Mr. Endersby?
I am too.
Shirley Satterfield, she is out. Mr. Shore, he is also absent. Mr. Shatskin?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Pyle? He's also absent. We do have a quorum, and Shirley just wanted me to let everyone know that she gives her regrets, but she's the Recording Secretary for the Paul Robeson Project, and they have a meeting at 4:30, so she was not able to attend.
She's a busy lady. So, let's see the announcements. I just wanted to let everyone know that on Thursday night at 7:00 PM, the subgroup of the planning board is holding a hearing on ideas for the new SPRAB, which is the Site Plan Review Board that they discontinued. So, if you go to the municipal website, it should be announced there, and it's really a listening session to see what people think about the review process. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. The other announcement is that on Friday, June 3, the State Historic Preservation Office is holding their annual conference at the Trenton War Memorial, and you can get tickets online if you Google Historic Preservation Conference NJ 2022 or something. It brings you right to the website. I think it's like $90. So, and it's just Friday. So, it goes from like 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and it's the first time in person in, what, three years or something? So, yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's great. Do you have anything else, Elizabeth?
Madam Chair, I thought maybe you'd want to touch on the planning board meeting and how the concept review went for the application.
Simplify, yeah, Simplify Living, which is that, that was the concept review we heard on Linden Lane, 39 Linden, I believe. And so, they had modified their elevations and plans somewhat, but that it was not received very well, and so I anticipate they'll be starting over. Anyway, so I think they really, I think the planning board really appreciated the preliminary view that HPC had of that project. And, and if your ears were burning, it was because they were talking about HPC a lot. So, anyway, thank you, thank you for that. And I also wanted to say that Justin is now, I think, the Acting Planning Director. Is that right, Justin?
Yes.
And so, I wanted to thank him for continuing to help us because he is really busy right now. So, I, and, and he's still doing minutes. So, anyway, it's, he's an amazing person, and I'm very grateful that we have his help. So, and always, Elizabeth, thank you so much for your help as well. So, hopefully you guys will get more help in the future.
We hope so.
Is there any update on, did 11 Madison go to the zoning board?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Let's see, 11 Madison. I'm trying to, is that the one? They're all kind of blurring together now. Oh, no, not yet.
The one with the...
Right.
Okay. So, I believe we have minutes, and I know everybody got a good chance to look at them. I know, Roger, you had some changes. Justin, I saw you got those changes. If there isn't anything else, I'll just take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
My second.
Thanks, Frida. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much, Justin. Those were excellent, excellent, excellent.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify what Roger asked for. I had to kind of think about it, but Madison did go to the zoning board, but it's carried because it wasn't finished. The public didn't have the opportunity to talk, so I believe that their meeting is rescheduled to June for the, you know, the follow-up meeting.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
We'll keep you updated. And just to let you know, our June meeting is on...
20th.
The 20th. Yeah. So, keep your calendars open. That's 4 o'clock. Thank you. So, we have just two applications today. The first one is 335 Nassau Street, and either Justin or Elizabeth, if you could bring the applicants over.
I don't see Kathy Knight here yet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you know what, Justin? I brought Ron Berlin over by accident. Could you...
Well, sorry, Ron. Well, wait a second. I mean, if, if, we can wait a couple minutes, but if Kathy isn't here, then I guess we could change the order.
She might be here. There's two people with the name Don Denny that both raised their hands, promoting on both the panelists. They could have shared.
All right. Well, if she's here, then we gotta, yeah. Oh, yeah, I see Kathy.
I see Kathy.
Okay.
Sorry, I came in with my husband's name, and I couldn't change it until you let me in. I don't know why, but so I'm here, and my husband, Don Denny, is here as well.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Well, thanks for being here on time. So, Elizabeth, you wrote a great report, and I was wondering if you want to summarize your, your points?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is actually the first accessory dwelling unit application that the HPC is reviewing, and I think that this is a great example. So, Kathy M. Knight is the applicant for this project, and she's filed an application pursuant to the Princeton Borough Land use code for historic preservation plan review, and she is hoping to construct a accessory dwelling unit on her property that's located at 335 Nassau Street. The property is identified as Block 52.01, Lot 33, and it lies in the former borough R3 Zone. This property is in the Municipal Jugtown Historic District, and is also in the New Jersey State and National Register of Historic Places, Jugtown Historic District, and the Kings Highway Historic District. According to the overlay zone map, this property is classified as Type 2. According to the zoning officer, he had reviewed it. I think that Ms. Knight can confirm that he had an opportunity to view it. There was no variances, issues that he had with this. So, the jurisdiction is solely within the Historic Preservation Commission. So, I'm not going to go over the history of Jugtown, but I provide that for always the applicant and someone who kind of wants a, you know, a little refresher. But the Jugtown District is visually cohesive and distinctly different from the downtown Princeton Commercial District along Nassau Street. The majority of houses are situated close to the street, and they sit on small lots with small front yards and negotiable side yards. So, the properties to the west and south of the project site are residential. Properties east and north are retail and office, and the property borders Harrison Street Park to its south. The neighborhood maintains the character of a small village and a residential community. The house on the, the site was first seen on the 1911 Sanborn Map, which was, which actually had a lot created and had the structure with the address of 333 Nassau Street. So, there were multiple structures on that property. The property fronts on the south side in Nassau Street near the Harrison Street intersection. The site consists of 0.19 acres, and the house is situated close to the public right-of-way as their neighboring properties are. A driveway runs along the east side of the house and a sidewalk along the west with a patio in the rear. Approximately a third of the land of the property is located in the back and designated for a, for a parking lot, which actually connects to the adjacent Michael Graves and Associates parking lot at 341 Nassau Street, Lot 47, and that is access from South Harrison Street. There's an existing six-foot-high wood fence that frames the south and west borders of the parking lot. The applicant is proposing to eliminate about half the existing parking spaces on her property to construct a freestanding, one-story, 584-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. The applicant indicates that the unit will be less than 15 feet tall and will have a low-pitched roof, which will maximize the use for solar panels. The, the unit will consist of one bedroom, an open living dining kitchen area, bathroom, laundry, and a mechanical room. The main entrance will face the east towards South Harrison and the parking lot. She is proposing double-hung windows, which will be installed on the front facade of the unit, and slider windows on the back. There will be double doors, which opens to a patio off the south elevation, and a new fencing gate that will be added to enclose the patio area. The structure will have a crawl space, but no full basement. The plans indicate the existing walkway and arbor from the primary house to the accessory dwelling unit will remain, including an existing shed. So, there'll be approximately five parking spaces still retained on her property. Let's see what else. She's also proposing new plantings in a planting bed along the front of the accessory dwelling unit, again facing east towards the parking lot and South Harrison Street. There are details of the application, which she has new cedar fencing, which was already discussed. That's going to be four feet high to kind of match the High Victorian picket fence that's there. She's proposing lantern-style light fixtures, which are going to be 19 inches high with a black finish, hardy plank siding with a smooth finish, five-inch exposure, and the aged pewter color, which is supposed to match the siding that's on the existing house. Marvin Elevate double-hung windows with simulated divided light with seven-eighth-inch spacer bars. The slider windows, again, are going to be installed on the west building elevation. Simpson Entry Door Contemporary Style, which is constructed of fur and clear glass. There's going to be a hood vent that's on the west elevation. It's going to have paring foundation. Bore will be used for the corner boards, the fascia boards, and casing, which is going to have a thick sill. Half-round aluminum gutters with smooth round downspouts will also be added. A black corrugated standing seam metal roof will serve as the roofing surface, and there's going to be a one-foot-six-inch roof overhang on all sides except the east side, which is the one, again, facing towards the parking area, the entrance, which will have a two-foot-six-inch overhang. Solar panels, as we discussed, on the roof, the, there'll be bluestone steps to the front and to the side patio. Brick pavers are going to be placed for the patio and the bottom of the entrance steps, and in front of the existing frame shed that's to remain. New plantings that she's proposing are going to be compact inkberry holly, snowflake, oak leaf hydrangea, and some seasonal plantings and planters. And then she will also have an AC compressor in the rear of the unit. So, the criteria for Stor- Preservation Plan Review is again listed. This is considered a new structure, so the criteria, again, are offered in the report, and there are also items that deal with landscape fencing and walls. Just to go to the comments and recommendations. So, the Historic Preservation Office appreciates that this application sensitively placed the building on the site and the modest size of the ADU. The seven-foot grade change really works to minimize the presence of the structure on the site and, and creates distance from the existing historic structure. So, it will distract from the primary historic property and also from the other historic structures within the district. The size proportions and styles of the windows and doors appear to be appropriate for the new structure. It's also noted that the low-profile roof will accommodate the solar panels and will be visually minimized from the public right-of-way. The color of the windows and any trim on the building should be specified in the finished selection and product information. I'm not sure that I saw that, Kathy. Also, the wattage and type of lighting for the lantern should be provided. If they're going to be LED, it is recommended they are supplied in the warm spectrum. It's also recommended the applicant incorporate some ornamental shade trees, which are located, which are not in conflict with the operation of the solar panels, and perhaps some diversity of shrub plantings can be selected. And under five, there are questions for the applicant, which talks about actually the existing shed. Is that going to be used to store trash and recycling? Is it also being relocated from what seems to be closer to the primary house on the survey plan, or is it something that's already there and is maybe not shown up on the survey plan? Is there curbing proposed between the parking area and the new entrance to the ADU unit? Is there any existing lighting on the parking lot that needs to be removed or might impact the accessory dwelling unit? Let's see, are there any additional lighting proposed for the patio area, either on grade or on the building? And it was just hard for me to see what fencing was going to remain, and then actually the true limits are new. So, if you could just talk about that and maybe have that clarified in the drawings, and what kind of arrangements that your property has with 333 Nassau Street as far as the ingress and egress on the driveway access? And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Elizabeth. I'll just hand it over to Kathy if you want to. Oh, oh, yeah, you got to get sworn in.
Kathy, this is the only hearing you're going to have, so do you swear the testimony you're about to give is truthful?
I do.
All yours.
Thank you. Elizabeth, thank you for that summary. You really covered it. So, I had a question, whether you wanted me to quickly share my screen and go through the application. Does the committee, would they like to review it, or have they seen enough and heard Elizabeth's summary, and do you just want me to address the questions? So, I wasn't sure how you would prefer me to handle it.
I mean, maybe we could get like a, just a, like a three-minute walkthrough?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. So, I'll just share my screen. I have, should be right here. Can everyone see the, the drawings?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Do I need to bring them up, you know, increase the magnification a little bit on the drawings?
If you can, just a little.
All right. Well, this is the original survey, and one of the questions I will address is just this frame shed. This is the original survey. Here's Nassau Street. Here's our home, and the area that we're talking about is this parking lot in the back, and there was a shed located here. It has now been relocated as of our last renovation, and I'll scroll down and show you, and it is shown. It is now back here. So, this, this plan just flipped, and Nassau Street is on the left, and this is the area on the, at the rear of our property where we're proposing the dwelling unit, and the Harrison Street Park is now on the right on this plan. So, this shed that Elizabeth noted was up here originally when we purchased the property is now located here, and we were not planning to move that shed. As you can see, the accessory dwelling unit is actually reducing the amount of impervious on the lot. I'm going to just scroll up. This little diagram shows that it was, if you look at the top diagram, it, it is just a complete parking lot at the rear of our property now. By longstanding agreement, it is used by, is shared with Michael Graves' office for parking, and we are proposing, as you see, modifying it to, to this bottom plan here. So, we are actually reducing the amount of impervious coverage on our site. The proposal here, there is an existing fence here along the park side, which is actually four feet high. I think it might have been translated as six-foot high in, in the, in the report, but that this existing one is four feet high. It's a chain-link fence. This one along the south side of the property is six-foot-high fence, and then the amount of new fencing we're proposing is this dotted line right here, just to create a nice, a sitting area that's somewhat private for, for the accessory dwelling unit.
Was there, it looked like there was fencing along the north side, along the edge of the...
So, there is an existing fence right here. So, also see this line. That's existing, and there's a quite a lovely trellis here with a hanging lantern, and it has some mature planting, and we were not planning to change any of that. So, right now, you've got some nice decorative trees here, pachysandra, a little arbor coming in, and, and this proposal doesn't need to change any of that.
I'm thinking right by the edge of the parking area. See that line that, that goes along the edge of the existing, on the north side of your parking lot? It looks like...
This is...
Nope, nope. Go a little bit.
Up here.
No, no, no. Go to the, go to the, the north side of your parking lot on your property, and there's a symbol that looks like a fence. It come down, yep, right there. See that?
Oh, that's just a limit of disturbance for the, it, it means nothing. It'll be removed. We're just, that's the amount of land that's being disturbed. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, that's what that's showing. Okay. So, we're really not planning to disturb any of the existing fencing along here or on any of the three sides, and we're just adding a small amount right here, and that's where we're proposing to make it a four-foot-high picket fence. We just thought it was a little nicer than making it a six-foot-high. The other question was about the shed. Right now, the shed is sort of storing bicycles and a lawnmower, so it's garden tools, and so we weren't planning to modify it to make it for trash. We have a very nice trash enclosure here on the main house. It works beautifully up here and keeps everything nice and tidy. It's all fenced in. So, we are proposing that this unit would use this area here, and I'm sorry, it's not really indicated. I'd be happy to change it, but for some trash cans up there on their property behind a fence to keep it screened. We were proposing that there would be additional curbing. So, here is, here's the asphalt paving area. We were proposing that we would put a curb, if you kind of follow my cursor right around here, to provide some separation from the parking lot to the landscaped areas, just to provide a nice little separation there. There was a mention about trees. So, this is a fairly heavily wooded or shaded part of our property in that there is a very nice existing tree line here that's pretty heavily planted with some tall, a lot of pines in there, some maple trees, and then our, our neighbor's property right here is, has quite a bit of planting, some, some, again, some maples and some other things. So, we really didn't feel there was room to add additional trees here. That's why we just propose some lower landscaped areas. Also, with the solar panels, it's, you know, we're not, we were marginal for how much sun we get anyway, so we, to add trees really wouldn't help us with the solar situation. So, we just thought it was most effective to keep more lower plantings proposed along there to soften it as you, as you drive in across the parking lot. I just want to make sure there weren't any other questions on the site before I move on to the plans. Oh, you asked about lighting. So, right now, the lighting we have, we have a, a hanging lantern right here on this trellis entering the back of our property. What we're, and then there is sight lighting that's provided by Michael Graves' office. There's a pole approximately here, and there's a fairly large kind of industrial kind of light on their building across the other side of the parking lot. I've never felt that our lot was too dark, and we've never added any parking for that, lighting for their parking at this end. It just hasn't seemed to need it. So, the proposed additional lighting for this structure, we have on the elevations, and we'll get to them, I'll point them out to you. We have two lanterns shown on either side of the front door, and we had two lanterns shown on either side of this terrace door off of the living area into their little sitting area, and I don't, we were not planning any additional parking lighting. There was a question about the access for 335 Nassau Street. They are located there. Our neighbors, they're located in this, we join this, this property line. There is a access gate they have through the six-foot-high stockade fence to their property, but there's no legal egress or ingress across there. They don't have any agreement with Michael Graves, with 341 Nassau or with, with us for access there. So, there hasn't been any provisions made for that. And if I'll just keep going through the plans. I think I already mentioned that we don't need any, it meets all the zoning regulations. It meets, we've actually already have been approved by engineering, so it's really just historic we're looking at. We've got a very simple plan here. This is the entrance from kind of facing the Harrison Street side. There's a bathroom in the middle. There's a bedroom on this side with a little area behind it with a walk-in closet and mechanicals, and there's a living area here, an open living area here with a glass door down towards the park direction where there's a little sitting area. Really simple, simple plan proposed, and it's also, it's on a crawl, a crawl, but it'll be constructed on a crawl space. We're making it very energy efficient, so we're not bringing any fossil fuel to it. We're just going to do electric. We're going to use mini splits, and we're going to do an induction cooking range, and we're actually doing surface-mounted lights, so we have a very heavily insulated roof structure. So, it was actually my daughter who said, "Mom, if you're going to do this, you just have to make it really energy efficient." That's what we all want, and, and that's, and that's what we're doing for the small structure. And with the good new windows and the insulated walls, it should be, it should be very efficient to run. Moving on to the elevations, slide over here. This is what you'll see looking across the parking lot from, from Harrison Street across the parking lot to the back end of our, of our property. The, this doesn't have a lot. That's, that's, I've got a shed in front of it, so you don't really see much there. This is the opposite end, the south elevation, where you have the doors towards the park and the couple of lanterns on either side of that door. And then this is the back elevation, and there is a stockade fence going across here that's about six-foot-high. So, we really just did high windows, and we're, I think it refers to me as being sliding windows. We were actually just proposing maybe fixed because they'll be very hard to reach. They're fairly high up, and it's just to catch some afternoon light coming into the structure above the fence area. And then we just have some interior elevations shown here. You can see the tall windows that are proposed for the backside of the property.
That's great.
Any questions on the, on the plans or the applications?
I mean, it looks great. Are there questions, comments?
I, I also have an application, which was a little bit funny, addendum with some of the materials, but I tried, I took some pictures in the neighborhood. I don't know if you found that amusing of trying to find another accessory dwelling. You know, the Jugtown District is not very big, so I could walk around some Saturday morning in an hour and look at all the houses that are in our neighborhood, and I could not find another accessory dwelling unit, which I thought was interesting, which Elizabeth referred to. I found some garages and sheds, and I included them at the back of my package, but I, there wasn't a lot to inspire us with that particular aspect, so.
I mean, I think because the ordinance just changed, and now, you know, I think there's been... I mean, I think because the ordinance just changed and now, you know, I think there's been a long time tradition of sort of discouraging accessory dwellings. And now there's a full out encouragement of accessory dwellings. So it's actually something I think the municipality is really excited about. And they're kind of hoping these happen all over town.
Yep, yep. I know personally, I'm working with some clients and helping them as well. So there's a lot of interest in town right now.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's fantastic. I'm really, really excited about it. So I don't have any issue at all. I think this is a beautiful project and really like a, a poster child for what you should do. So it's really great. It's really great. Any, any, Frida, you have any comments?
No, I, I'm with you. I like it a lot.
It, I mean, and it really makes sense because there's all these single family homes where there might be room on the property to build, you know, an affordable unit or a small like rentable unit. And it, it just makes a ton of sense. It's really kind of sad. They were prohibited for so long. Alrick, did you want to say anything?
Oh, boy. I always look for something redeeming on all these applications. The premise of a, of a complimentary secondary structure is fine with me. But I just find this building wanting in just every possible way. I, I, it, it's supposed, when I first saw it, I thought solar interesting. But the, the solar panels face east, not, not south. The roof angle is, it, it, it looks to me like a, like a trailer that, that it just, it, it's just, there are too many styles that have been two over two windows. Gang together, then a door in the middle that, a double door in the middle, which has its own style, which isn't complimentary to the house, the neighborhood. The rest of the details, so, so far as they go on the building, it just, it, it, I'd rather see a parking lot. I'm sorry.
Okay. Roger, you have any comments?
I have a smidge of Elrick's concerns, but the, the site is so out of the way. I mean, as Kathy was saying before, it's really pretty wooded. I took a ride over there and I'd never been in that parking lot before and had a hard time seeing where the site was from, from the parking lot because it's, it's very shielded. Both by fencing and by, by the natural environment. So I, I applaud the the seller dwelling unit piece of it. I think that's great. I agree with you on that, Julie. And I think it's adequate. I think it's, it's, it's going to do what it's meant to do.
Well, thanks. I mean, I honestly don't think that it's going to be visible. You know, in any, any significant way. And so I, I personally don't find those issues with it. And I feel like as far as encouraging people to consider accessory units, I, I just feel like it, it sets a, you know, it, it's really a change in approach that the municipality has taken. Clearly, the price point of housing in Princeton is astronomical. And creating affordable units, rentable units, places that are available for just different income levels is a huge priority. And so, I mean, I think there's going to be a lot more projects like this. And I don't know, I, I feel like I don't want to, I don't want to step in the way of, of things going in this direction.
Yeah, let me clarify. I mean, it's, it's a type two district. And what we're concerned about is what's seen from the front. What we see from the front is their nice house. And I think that's, that's the structure under which we're working for this approval.
Right. So I mean, I, but I respect your, your opinion, Alrick, definitely. You know, we don't have to be unanimous or anything on this, but I think we're all sort of clear on where we stand. I don't know. Is there a motion one way or the other?
I would move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. So it's been moved by Roger and seconded by Frida to approve the application as shown. I guess take, if Elizabeth, if you want to take the roll call.
Of course. Ms. Capazoli?
Yes.
Mr. Endersby?
No.
Mr. Shetkin?
Yes.
Ms. Hallard?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Cassie. And thank you for waiting a week. I'm sorry about the delay.
No problem.
Okay. Take care.
Can I just ask you two, if you would just update your drawings to include whatever items that might have been missing and then submit that? So we could have that ready for after we do the noticing in the paper for this. Will do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know.
Bye. Okay. Our second application is 220 John Street. I'm pretty sure we heard the concept review. So we should be pretty familiar. So there's John and Megan Jackson and then Ron Berlin is their architect. And I don't know if, oh, and Ryan's here. Hi.
Ryan, is there anyone missing? We have Ron, you and the applicant.
I believe so. Both, both applicants are on in their, their same Hollywood Square tonight. So I believe that's, that's all of us.
Thank you.
Okay. And Elizabeth, do you want to start off with summarizing your report?
Yes. So I just want the commission members to know that I did not have a copy of Mr. Bridger's report. When I had finalized mine, he had sent it to me this morning. So there'll be some adjustments to the variances and I'll just touch on it briefly. And if Mr. Kennedy wants to elaborate, you know, I'll leave for him because he's probably seen that report before I have. So the applicant in this application is Ron Berlin of Berlin Architects PC. The applicants are, the owners are John and Megan Jackson. So the applicant has filed an application pursuant to the Princeton Borough Land Use Code to construct a rear addition to their house. To accomplish this, it necessitates requesting variances and the demolition of the existing roof. The subject property is situated on the west side of John Street between the cross streets of Lidl and Clay. The site is identified as block 15.04, lot eight on the Princeton tax map with the address of 220 John Street. It's located in residential neighborhood in the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District of the Princeton Municipal Zoning Overlay Map in the R4 zone of the former Princeton Borough. Prior to the application being heard by HPC, the applicant must satisfy the requirements set forth under section 10B-290 of the municipal land use ordinance for demolition. Mr. Schmierer has had an opportunity to review all the material that was submitted to satisfy this. And I believe that he has confirmed that, that this application is appropriate to proceed.
Madam Chair, everything's in order.
Thank you.
This application is in the jurisdiction of the zoning board and HPC serves as advisory to their board. The subject property is designated as type two. And there is a property inventory survey for this property by Weiss Preservation Planning. The property is classified as contributing to the, to the historic district and significance of that with this one Jackson historic district. Weiss's inventory states the house was constructed 1892 in a vernacular style. It is a single family, two-story, three-bay house. And there's a partial M1, one and two-story addition that has been incorporated to the house in the rear. Windows are one over one, double hung and symmetrically positioned with fenestrations aligning between floors on the front facade, except for the middle window on the first floor, which is slightly offset to the left. Single windows on each floor of the south elevation are centered and aligned between floors. And windows on the west elevation are not symmetrically positioned. However, they do align between floors. There's actually only one pair that do that. The two-story section of the house has an asymmetrical gable roof with a shed roof on the one-story rear addition. Decorative metal posts support a full width covered front porch with a standing seam metal roof. The porch decking is wood with metal railings and rests on mason repairs. The building has an exterior stucco finish. The applicant came before HPC on their October 18th, 2021 meeting for a concept review, which many of you probably are familiar with. So the proposed application is, the applicant wishes to construct the second floor over their existing one-story rear portion in the back of their house. And in addition, they'd like to add a very small two-story addition with new foundations also in the rear of the house. The expansion and addition will, will be contained within the existing building with. And the proposed second floor addition will increase the floor area by approximately 291 square feet. And the new two-story addition will add 43.1 square feet to each floor. So the total of 377.6 square feet will be added to the house. These additions will allow for a new family room and the reconfiguration of the kitchen dining room and half bath on the first floor. And on the second floor, the floor plan will be redesigned to create an additional bedroom and en suite bathroom to them, to the primary bedroom with a walk-in closet, a secondary bathroom in the hall, a laundry room and a study. Redesign the exterior space will require removing, replacing and adding new windows. Existing windows will replace or, excuse me, existing doors will replace for aesthetics. There is a window dimension analysis as provided. The lowercase a's existing, lowercase letters are the existing windows and the uppercase are the proposed. If you refer to them on your plans. And improvements talk about the height of the building will be increased to be 26.2 inches, which is going to be a little bit more than two feet. And due to the steepness of the pitch of the new roof, the ease will be lower than, than current. The roof will be replaced with a new three-tab JF marquee weather max, which is a charcoal color. Light fixtures proposed are going to be recessed vapor tight exterior fixtures on the soffits of the pent roof overhanging the new rear door. There's going to be a rear terrace that's 22 by 22, sorry, 23 by 23 inches in a gray concrete paper. I believe that there was a sample photograph of that provided. Replacement windows will be Marvin elevated fiberglass, one over one double hung, except for the attic windows. The front door replacement will be painted Benjamin Moore Iron Mountain. And the stucco siding will be painted moonlight, which is a gray color. The trim will be white. Exterior casing doors and window sash will also be white. And the new aluminum gutters and downstairs also white. So to get to the zoning, so I actually reviewed the application. So the application talks about the height setback on the southern property and impervious coverage variances. But when I looked at Derek's report today, actually I didn't see anything about impervious. It did talk about the height, the setback, and it talked about the side yard variance required for the second story addition, the new two-story addition and then the combined. So I believe that there is no impervious coverage variance, but it's just for setback and for the height to setback. Let me see what else I have here. I think then, again, this would be reviewed for criteria applicable to historic districts since they're adding on to the existing structure. And we're just going to go to the comments and recommendation. So the house is an existing non-conforming structure that sits already on a non-conforming lot. So the Office of Storage Preservation appreciates that the proposed addition is a modest size and built in the rear of the existing house. And the street-facing windows and most windows on the side elevations, this two-story portion of existing house will remain. Those that are being replaced are really being replaced because of the reconfigure of the interior space. The applicant is asked to provide the existing window material and if they are considered original or replacement. So we would just like some clarification on what is the material of the existing windows. I know that Weiss Preservation has talked about they've been, they are replacement. I always like confirmation because there are times when, in which that, that's, is not true. The roof height will be slightly over two feet and do this deeper slope roof. The lower height of the ease will be visually, will visually reduce the distance from the top of the second floor windows to the eve, amplifying the profile of the new roof. The applicant should be prepared to discuss the steeper roof pitch and the reason for the increased roof height. Just wondering, is the ceiling height on the second floor changing? Is there going to be an attic space with the pull-down stairs? And what's the attic ceiling height going to be? According to the window replacement analysis, replacement windows for cell A does not reflect the longer linear appearance. And the B windows are proportionally larger and taller. So some replacement windows are proposed on the side elevation of the existing two-story portion of the building. And it's just, just wondering if the applicant has considered repurposing some of the existing windows? If again, if they are not replacement or the replacement, but of historic appropriate dimensions. Because as you can see by the, by the windows that are labeled A, they are much narrower and they appear longer. So if that was an opportunity for them to be able to use them, if feasible, they might want to consider using them on the two-story section of the original house. So there's some consistency with that style of windows. The applicant asked to clarify the product name of the entry door. I wasn't really sure what it was. And because it is slightly taller, if the fenestration is going to remain as is. The new light fixture for the rear door utilizes LED. And we would like to see that that color spectrum again is in the warm color range. And if the applicant addressed what type of sustainability measures have been applied to this application. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I guess Ed has to swear you in. I think, or since this is going to zoning, do they have to be sworn in?
Yeah, they'll get sworn in Juliet zoning. So this is really our review and recommendation.
Okay.
Still be truthful though, but they don't have to be sworn in.
All right. Well, we'll, so just to make everyone understand, we are writing a memo to zoning as opposed to voting. So I guess I'll hand it over to Ron.
Okay. Let me, before Ron jumps in. We got a, I actually haven't seen Derek's new memo, but we, we did their, essentially the, the, the types of variances that are needed here. As you'll see from Ron's plan, the, the addition actually steps in and doesn't, doesn't go any closer than the existing setbacks, which are pre-existing non-conforming conditions. But because we are actually building on top of some of the existing non-conforming setbacks, that counts as a variance as well. The other bucket of variances is the height to setback. We are going a little bit higher. And that will cause a slightly more vertical height to setback plane. And then Elizabeth, I think you were correct. There, there shouldn't be a, a coverage variance. We're adding actually less than 20 square feet of coverage and leaving quite a bit on the table, so to speak, in, in Ron's design here. So with that. So with that, I'll, we do have John and Megan here. Maybe they could quickly introduce themselves. Yeah, I guess they met you guys in, in October, but just to give a few words introducing themselves and talking about their, their, their need. For this modest addition here at their, their home at two twenty John Street.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having us. We're excited to be back. I guess we'll say a little bit similar what we said back in October. We moved in in twenty nineteen. And I guess just fell in love with the neighborhood, saw ourselves being here for the long term and want to kind of evolve the house for how we envision our, our lives to evolve in the coming years. To a certain extent. So that's what we're hoping to do today.
Thank you. Okay, so let's talk about the plan.
Ron, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all very much for making this meeting. I, I really appreciate it. I hope it's equally as convenient for you as the other meeting would have been, or maybe even more so. But it really helped my applicant and I appreciate it very much. I was away, I was in Rome, so I was going, I'm going from. Grandeur to humble architecture, and I'm very happy to do so. Anyway, you've seen this proposal before, it really hasn't changed since the. Since the hearing that we, the concept review, which was really helpful to everyone. And we appreciate that also very much. I guess the, perhaps the best thing I could do would be to address the points, questions and comments that Elizabeth stated in her report. So I do that? Or would you look me to? I think you were all here for the concept.
I think we were.
So why bore you with a replay? Let me, let me address then Elizabeth's questions in order. The first two are just flattering, so I would just skim over those and go to the existing window material. I, I'm pretty sure all or most of the windows are vinyl. They're not original windows. The type of window is crummy. That's the type of window that's there now. So we're, we're, you know, we're pretty happy to replace those that we'll be replacing. The roof height is increasing a bit. I think I want to share screen with, with this matter. One thing I want to note, though, is that the present house has virtually no eve. And I, I don't believe in that. I believe that. Overhanging eaves protect the walls of the house. And if you went there very recently, you'll see that the stucco is now falling off. It's that bad because it wasn't protected. So I'm happy to provide these, these leaves. They do bring the roof line down lower, which I think is actually a good thing. You know, makes the house even a little bit more reduced in its profile. But yes, we want to create an attic space. And yes, you guessed correctly, Elizabeth, that. The ceiling height is a bit of a factor here too. May I share a screen?
Yes.
Kind of a quick one. Let me just get this sort of set up so it's not an awkward sharing screen. Yeah. Let's see, here I go. Can you see it?
Yep.
Good. And this just shows that south elevation. But the red lines indicate floor and ceiling levels. And as you can see. The floor ceiling level in the front of the existing first floor. It's something like seven foot four, I think. I can give you an exact number by measuring from my plans if you need it. But, but John and Megan really wanted, like in the new area, will you please give us, you know, a proper ceiling height? So I did. Here it jumps to eight feet. And, and we're also not stepping down here, but maintaining the existing floor level. And as a consequence, the second floor gets pushed up somewhat. And, and hence, you know, we have a higher, a higher plate line in effect. And yeah, the owners, this attic height, this is assuming no collar ties. Maximum here in the tallest area at the front of the house is still only five foot eight inches to the ridge. So it's, you know, it's an awkward ducking attic, but it will provide much-needed storage for the owners. And that is my explanation. The window replacement analysis, we were, we should have been more logical in, in this. I'm going to stop the share, but I'm going to go back to it in a, in a moment. Eh, maybe I'll leave it. I will. The capital A window is a quote replacement. For actually for the C windows. Now let me see if I can explain this. And that. So these, these windows. These new windows on the second floor are essentially a kind of a recap of this window, which is an existing window, this lowercase c window. And it's like a little bit of a compromise. That's a pretty mean window. This retains the same proportions, possibly exactly the same proportions if I know myself. And is meant to harmonize with that. This lowercase d window is an exception. And we couldn't even do it if we wanted to because the sill would be on the floor of the new addition, if you can see that. Are you following me all?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the explanation for the A, capital A type window. The capital B type window shown here. Was its, its size was mostly driven frankly by the needs of this interior space. This wants to be a fun lookout, happy, light corner. Where the family can kind of dine informal. And, and so. I, I, I wanted these windows to echo the proportions of the existing windows, but not be too explicit about it again here. The sill height would have been too low for that room. We want, we don't want to be much below tabletop height in the dining area here, in my opinion. And it seems like basically a compromise between these lowercase a windows. And the C windows shown here. The C windows themselves, if you refer to the existing plans. These are, these are kitchen windows. We have a counter below them. The existing windows are like this, but smaller. And I just wanted to make these kind of as big as I could and as. Harmonious with the proportion, the sort of average proportions, as it were, of the existing windows as I could do. So that is the explanation for the fenestration that you see in this south elevation.
Okay.
The product name of the replacement entry door, it's a trustile door, T R U S T I L E. And it's a solid wood, painted wood door. The new light fixture. I expect will be an LED light and. I can't make it warm enough, frankly. Like, don't worry about that. I'm such a nut about that. It's a fight that I have with contractors and stuff. So, you know, I'm going to shoot for twenty-seven hundred degrees Kelvin. Like that is not going to be a problem with me. And, and as far as the sustainability measures are concerned. We're going to do the best that we can here. The owner's budget is going to be, this is going to be rough, I think. But we are insulating. Probably most of the house. The contractor who's the prime candidate for this is an insulation nut. So even if we didn't want to do it, he'd make us do it. And we're, we're installing a heat pump system, electric heat pump and air conditioning system. We're going to try to select materials that are relatively locally sourced within five hundred miles. And we're going to try to select materials that have a high recycling content. So it's, it's an, it's an intent, but it's not going to be a kind of a determinative template for all the selections that are made.
All right. I think that's pretty thorough analysis. Let's see, are there other questions about the project in general? Eric, what you got?
I, I liked the project in October. I still like the project. Everything that I disliked about the previous applicant, application. I applaud about this one. That is that it, it's a straightforward building with straightforward materials. It's part of a neighborhood which has its own vernacular. Its own vocabulary and there's an attempt to follow that vocabulary. And to reflect the fact that this house has been, has grown incrementally, has evolved. And that evolution continues. It's. It, it's, it's, it's appropriate to its location. It's, it's scale and proportion. Some of those factors have changed a bit, but in fact, it is harmonious and I. The care and attention to trying to make. Correct decisions based on, 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 on a, 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 a simple, straightforward building. Is, is highly recommended and that, and this is a poster child, I think, for the area. And for other projects that we will be reviewing. Thank, thank you all for, for your attention to, to, to those criteria. Thank you.
I mean, this is a fantastic neighborhood, really, really close to town, lively, fun. And I, I think it's going to just be fantastic on that street. I noticed there's been a lot of. Changes, but I think for the most part, really good, really good. Anyway, Frida and Roger, any comments?
Only to say that they did listen. They came for concept and they, they brought us back. Yeah, so it, it looks good.
I concur. I think it's going to be a, a nice. Addition to the, the neighborhood that will continue to blend in. And give the occupants this added space they need.
Yeah, it's really, really great. So. Let's see, is there a motion?
So moved.
Oh, thanks. And I see Eric wave his hand. So Eric seconds. All right, we can do a roll call.
Madam Chair, just, just to, out of a bunch of, it's been a while since I've had a, a demo permit. Is there any need to open up to the public for this type of application?
Oh, oh, right, because of the roof. Thank you. Good point. Are there any members of the audience who would like to comment?
No one's hand is raised, but maybe if we give him a minute to see if they want to comment on it, Madam Chair.
Okay. I don't think so.
Several might recognize as being possibly. I don't think they'll have any.
Yeah, I think it's okay. And then the other thing is technically, maybe we didn't have to vote. But obviously, we're all enthusiastically supporting your application. And we'll indicate that in our memo to the zoning board.
Thank you so much.
And the zoning board meeting is when?
So we were, we were deemed complete and obviously this, this hearing had to occur. My hope is that they'll get us on for the twenty-second, but it hasn't. I haven't seen that confirmed yet. I know Elizabeth, you think you've seen, got the sneak peek of the, of Derek's memo. I haven't seen it yet. So that's a good indication that maybe there's a, that will be on, but I haven't been able to confirm that yet.
Did you not get a copy of that memo? It was actually dated in April.
So I.
I thought we didn't, I thought they just forgot to give it to me.
Interesting. It's, it's, I think, and you know, often what happens when they deem us, deem one complete that has to go to another board first. They either hold off on putting it together or don't send the whole package. I, I'll look again. It's possible, but I just went through the email thinking, you know, when you, when you said that and I, I don't know that I have. But I'll, I'll reach out to Derek because I am, I'm not expecting anything surprising or frightening in that memo.
All right. Well, we'll proceed counting on that you, you know, you'll be hopefully at the twenty-second meeting. So Ed, Ed, do you have everything you need?
I do.
Oh, great. So I think that's it. Thank you so much and good luck at zoning. Hopefully either Elizabeth or myself will be there. And yeah, we'll fully support you.
Thank you so much, all of you. Thanks so much. It's a bit of a pleasure.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Take care.
Madam Chair and Ed, I think that we, we will still need a resolution for the demo, correct? We'll have to put that notice in the paper as we've done in the past.
We will, Elizabeth, but I think we have to wait till the zoning board approves it. We're not going to let them demo something if the zoning board doesn't approve it, right?
Okay, I wasn't sure about the sequence, but we will have a resolution, correct?
We, we'll do the recommendation and then at the same time I'll draft a demo that we can put on immediately if there's, right after the zoning board approves.
Thank you.
Great. I think that's, that's great. So thanks, Dad. And hey, Ed, I think you're done.
Good. I'm going to enjoy the nice day. See you.
Yes, beautiful outside.
Beautiful.
Okay, so that, I'm, I'm glad we got all of our stuff done. I just wanted to get a, let's see, we've got public comment. Is there any public comment?
No hands raised yet.
Okay. And then, um, then the next item is a staff report. I think we covered a lot in announcements.
Right. And, and, and I don't have anything. The only thing that I was going to ask our council liaison. Is if he could give us an update on the Paul Robeson house because I've noticed that there's a lot of things going on out there. Have to do with the porch and everything else. So I thought maybe he could give us an update on that status. But I understand that Shirley is going to go to the meeting today. So probably by the next meeting, someone will have an update for us.
Okay. And then there was also the issue about the statute, the Arts Council. And I think there's been a lot of back and forth about that too.
Yeah, Roger, Frida, were you also on that? I know Roger was. Okay, what, what Roger, you had a, a committee that you were working with, right?
Yeah, it was Shirley, Tom Pyle and me. We haven't had a chance to meet, you know, Tom's son's death, I think got. Took precedence, obviously. We were trying to, to just kind of have our initial meeting and, and set things in order. There are a lot of moving parts to, from, I, this is just me speaking since we haven't met. There seemed to be a lot of moving parts involved with this in terms of next year's celebration. Of Robson's birthday. And I'm not sure that we're looped in with all those different parts. And that's what we wanted to go over, especially with Shirley at the, our initial meeting. I'll, I'll contact Tom and Shirley again. And probably we'll wait till after. And probably we'll wait till after the Memorial Day holiday and start again.
Is there someone at the Arts Council that you were also going to, or someone was going to reach out to, either the director or someone?
Tom had a contact and I forget who it was. I, I mean, I know Maria Evans fairly well. But I didn't want to reach out to more than one person at one time. So, you know. If he's made, maybe Tom's already made a, some kind of outreach, but, but again, I don't know for sure.
And then one last thing, the Morning Star Church, is there anything going on with that?
I was going to ask Leighton that as well. I hadn't heard anything and I know that. I, I think that the, the church was looking to see if the, the Historical Cultural Society was interested. And actually moving forward in purchasing part of that property or the property to be able to rebuild a new. Building to what's existing. I know that Eric had started to take some dimensions the first, that last time we were there. But I'm not sure, you know, how much further that the historical society, sorry, the cultural and historical society, you know, move forward on. Whether they want to secure that for their museum or not.
Pardon me, but is there any kind of a deadline on, 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 I mean, I, I wasn't, I was away. After we, after we looked at the building and I haven't, I've been back now for almost a month, but I'm off to DR again next week. And it's, this is crazy, but I'm back and forth. I'm not going to get a chance to do any measuring between now and then. If I, I will be back by the 14th of June. So presumably the building will still be there.
I hope so.
Okay, I have, I did take a lot of photographs and. They're still on my phone, frankly, but.
Okay. Eric, when did you say you were leaving? You're returning the 14th and when are you leaving?
A week from tomorrow, the 31st.
Okay, May 31st. Okay. I'll, I'll reach out to Leighton and I'll see if he has any update on how they want to proceed with that.
Secondly, I, we have that subcommittee meeting on, on Wednesday with the Wills. And I have done drawings. Trying to reflect some of the comments that I've made when we got together before. And I, I'll, I'll bring them, but if I can, maybe I'll, I'll try and shoot them over to you in the meantime. This is. I got to work at 10, 10 after six this morning and I'm, it's, I'm going back to work now. So it's, this is a busy week.
And you saw the email that came from Marcia Willsey, right? That she had to tax some drawings. I guess that they were working on.
They changed the gable detail. That's what I noticed on it, but. Done is to put the, what they've shown before on one side of a sheet and. My suggested alterations on the, on the other, so you can compare them.
Okay. And I think that that's good for them because I think that that's really going to help them understand how it looks and how that change will make it look ultimately. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. That's going to be Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
Okay, very good. And the other thing, Madam Chair, is that I, I'm going to reach out to Ed. I'd like to know what the status of the Gulick Harvest.
So. Yeah. That's, I'm thankful for reminding me. I, I, that kind of slipped my mind. So thank you. I know that they proceeded with serving papers and I, you know. We'll see. I think there was some kind of judge, meeting with a judge or something.
Okay, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard anything in a while, so.
There was a blurb in the paper this last, on Town Topics last week. About a tavern tour in, in Kingston and it, it involves. The, the, the Brinson House, Brinson Gulick House there, so.
Really?
It's not, there's no, no one's going to be on that property, I can assure you. But it, it describes that as the first tavern in the area.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I don't have anything else.
Okay, and then, and then as far as next month goes, do you think we'll have a pretty short meeting?
No.
Nope. All right, just so you guys.
I think it's going to be packed or we're going to have to put somebody off to the next month. It's, it's.
It's really full. So, yeah, it's, thank you guys so much for coming today. We, we barely made the quorum. Because we don't have alternates. So I really, really appreciate you being here very much. I know the applicants do too.
Right. Oh, and so just to kind of give you an update on the, the positions that are open. I know that Leighton had reached out. And the administrator had called me to talk about, you know, the positions open, you know, has anyone been moved yet? Like the, the alternates, were they moved? Are they still in the position? And I said, there has been no action on anything yet, you know. We know that there are people who have applied. I think that, you know, that, that across the board, the members would be supportive of them. And I kind of just talked to him about that and we'll see what happens.
Okay, thanks. Just keep us updated. All right, that's all I have. So. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm always good for that.
Thanks, Eric.
Second.
Thanks, Roger. Okay, Frida, I did good. It's only 20 after five.
Meeting ever.
I know.
All right, well, next month we'll make up for it. All right, well, enjoy the day. Thank you so much.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, bye.